I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the rule of law. We were not going into the first executive session, we waited for an appraisal and did not receive it today. So, um, I think I'll need a motion to table this until the next meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, all those in favor. Opposed. Before I start, I'd like to, um...
Please, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call, I forget that every time.
Counselor Souza.
Present.
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Mello.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Chabot.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Before we start, I'd like to wish the town's number one supporter a very happy birthday. Um, Sally Black's birthday today, I won't tell you what the number is, but it's a big one. Consent agenda. Approval of regular town council minutes, April 27, 2015. Approve of executive session minutes, April 27, 2015. Approve of executive session minutes, April 13, 2015. Approve of special meeting minutes, February 28, 2015. Receipt of minutes from the filed and filed and commissions, the prevention commission one. Correspondence received and filed. Townville Compton Resolution Opposing Surtax on Non-Owner Occupied Residents. Townville Midtown Resolution Opposing Implementation of Second Home Taxes. Bills H5044 and S559 Exempting Single Family Homes and Condos from Taxation Until Property Is Sold. Bill H5847 Relating to Water and Navigation, Harbor and Hop Lines. Bills H5777 and S0510 Proposing Litigation of Marijuana in Rhode Island. Correspondence Regarding Prison Casino Proposal Four. Town Administrator April Monthly Department Report. Police and Fire Department Overtime Report for April. Request by James O'Dowd Street Committee Recommendations Referring to Workshop in June. Cavney Show Plan and Plan Administration Officer Activities Report for April 2015. Would anybody like to take anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to remove CA 3A and CA 3B.
Anything else? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, all those in favor. CA 3A.
CA 3A and CA 3A...
3B.
Sorry, CA 3A and CA 3B1 are roughly the same. And they are in reference to the... Are we on? Yeah, okay. It's these new microphone covers make it so soft, I can't hear. Make a reference to the non-owner occupied residence and vacant land assessed at more than a million dollars. And I just wanted to talk about this a little bit. Nancy had sent me the resolution for Middletown, so I could create a resolution from the town council here. And in looking at it a little closer, there's a discrepancy. In all of the resolutions that we've seen so far, I think Charlestown was one, Westerly is gonna have one soon, if not already, Little Compton and Middletown references a $2.50 per thousand assessment on homes over a million dollars. Now, reading the section of the budget, there's a reference to... There's no reference to a dollar amount, except raising 11.8 million dollars through this. And I... Through some more digging, there was a reference that the governor made in a speech two weekends ago indicating that it was 25 cents per thousand, over a million dollars. So the million after the first million, or whatever after the first million would be taxed at 25 cents per thousand. I can't confirm that, nobody seems to know if that's true or not. So, I'm gonna try and keep digging and see if I can find an actual reference to where she got that number from. But so far, it looks like it's a quarter per thousand, which is still something and it's worth talking about, but it's not doubling people's, um, you know, or it's, you know, it's not a large scale increase. A $2.50 per thousand versus a quarter is slightly different, so.
Madam President.
I will look into it. Go ahead.
You're done? I'm sorry. You're done? Well, I was just gonna say, I'd... Listening to a press release today from the governor, I guess both this and the idea of taking away funding for school books for private schools are off the table as of this point. She's not pushing that in her budget that was announced today, so.
Yeah, that's the sentiment I got as well.
I guess newfound money or whatever.
There's also, and I'm not sure if it's in this pile, I don't... Uh, no, I don't think it is. There's also a, um, something that could, you know, impact the town of Tiverton is a proposal to... It closed the loophole on rental income from second homes that essentially if you rented your house or had a rental property, it would be taxed like a hotel or bed and breakfast, or you would have to pay the hotel tax. So, it's also skinny on details, but I'll do my best in the next couple of weeks to get some more information. The others came along with it because it's all one agenda item, but... I move that we receive and file the resolutions, CA 3A and CA 3B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, all those in favor. Public hearings and presentations, public presentation. Tiverton Library Realty, Inc., Presentation of Deed of New Library to the Town of Tiverton.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Donnelly, Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Tiverton Libraries, but I'm here tonight actually as the President of the Tiverton Library Realty. And I'd like to explain a little bit about the Tiverton Library Realty. Back in 2001, the Wednesday night after 9/11, right after 9/11, we had a meeting scheduled up at Essex Library that included the town council, the town administrator, the budget committee, the superintendent of schools and natural unit trustees, and the library director, and the head of the Department of Library Services for the state. And at that time, it was explained to everyone the predicament that the library was in, that if Essex was not... Well, if we didn't do something about the situation with Essex, we were gonna lose town library services to Tiverton. And so, it was agreed at that meeting, we were told by the town council, "Okay trustees, it's up to you, run with it. You get this going and you put it through." So, since that night, we have been working on this project. And we established a building committee, and we looked at numerous sites around town to try to find a suitable one. Two of the people on the committee at that time, Dick Bixby and Phil Schuyler, were the two people who actually found that site, the site that we're using right now. And once we found that site, we needed a way to obtain the site. The trustees could not own land. So, our in-house pro bono attorney, James Donnelly, was able to, um, helped us establish Tiverton Library Realty in order to purchase land, in order to go after some of the grants and such, in order to fund that site, in order to buy it. And that's what we did. So, the Tiverton Library Realty, we do have those people here tonight, and I'd like to introduce them and have them stand up. Jennifer Thoreau, Dick Bixby, Phil Schuyler, Colin Robinson, and Greg Jones, and myself. And we were able to purchase the land. We met with Citizens Union Bank in Fall River at the time, which is now Bay Coast, and we went through everything and we purchased the land. And so, we have the deed here tonight, which we are going to present to the Town of Tiverton.
Thank you.
So, congratulations.
I'd like to thank everyone involved for bringing forth such a wonderful project. I was at the gala, and it is beautiful, and it's something we should all be proud of. And I can't wait till the rest of the town sees it. I also would mention to you, Barbara, I'd like to have a town council meeting there. So at some point, I'd like to arrange with the library and see, maybe in June, if we could have a town council meeting there so everybody could see the library also.
Okay. Well, we'll talk about it. We'll get together, we'll talk about it. All right. Thanks, thanks a lot. Oh, you know, I just wanna mention the dedication, the official dedication is June 13th. So mark it on your calendar, it's gonna be fantastic.
At what time?
It's gonna be at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Jeffrey Broadhead, Executive Director, Presentation of Prism Regarding Purchasing of Streetlights. If you'd like to sit down, you could, it's up to you.
Okay, great. Well, good.
It's kinda just...
I just need to get it in.
Choose one.
I'll pick one. Is this one?
Yep.
Is it on now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. That's better. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. For the record, my name is Jeff Broadhead. I'm a resident, not of Tiverton, I'm sorry, but of Marigansett. We also care about those taxes on properties, the houses on both sides of the yard are subject to that, and my house is, and we're near that value. So, but I'm here to say, a very interesting little story, is that sometimes the things we take great for granted have the greatest value. And when you're driving home tonight, just take a look, well, don't look away from the road, but be aware of the streetlights that are above you, and realize that each and every one of those, you've been paying $65 in overcharges every single year for decades and decades. That's about $90,000 a year in Tiverton. Perfectly legal overcharges, nobody's doing anything wrong, but nobody's been watching this store. And the streetlight rates that the Town of Tiverton and every other community in Rhode Island pays, almost every other community, is set by a rate tariff which is proposed by National Grid and approved by the Public Utilities Commission. It's a complicated document, and in it have been these little things called facility charges. It's the operation and maintenance of the streetlights. It's not related to the kilowatt hours they use, and in Tiverton, that's about $94 for each light. It should be about $25. I realized this in southern Rhode Island a couple of years ago, so we were told to butt out, it's none of our business, it's National Grid's business, it's the PUC's business. My board didn't take that well. I assume that you as a council wouldn't take that well if your administrator was told to butt out of something that's costing you too much money. And so, we ended up realizing the only fix was to write legislation. So, two years ago, we wrote the Municipal Streetlights Investment Act, and it was passed. It allows municipalities to take charge of the streetlight asset and save money on it. So, you have an action before you tonight, which is called a participation agreement, and that's to join a new group we formed, it's called Prism. It's a nonprofit, open book, run by the municipalities, and each municipality that joins gets a seat on the board. And this group will help the Town of Tiverton, and we have a consultant who will do the analysis for us, which will show you the true costs and benefits. You have a summary page in front of you, but I'll just hit a few of the highlights in it. The bottom line is that you're paying, I've got $189,000 a year for streetlights. This is from 2013, so probably slightly higher this year. To buy the streetlights away from National Grid, we put a formula in the law, and that is, that's the case now, preliminary estimate, this came from National Grid, G2.
Okay, sorry.
I'm sorry.
G2 is the summary.
Okay, sorry. I'm not reading directly in the same order as the summary, the summary is way more complicated than what I'm gonna say tonight. So, you're paying $190,000 a year. If you were to purchase your lights and do nothing else, in your first year, you'd have to pay $65,000 to buy those lights away from National Grid, and you would save about $25,000 a year, after the purchase price, for the first year. Your second year, you'd save $90,000 a year, and every year thereafter. What we're asking is the ability to do this analysis, which will show you not just that cost benefit, but how you can really save long-term. And that is to convert your lighting to LED lighting, and maybe with controls. The streetlight of the future is not at all what you see right now. We are at a point where the technology is changing. And we're at a point where the electric company would like to own that resource into the future, because the network that will have direct communication to police cars, fires, not as much an issue in Tiverton, but for Providence, Central Falls, Pawtucket, it'll have gunshot location and reporting instantly. By the time the 911 calls in, is, the police will already be responding. These, this communication network from streetlight to streetlight, if you just think about it, these are these little tiny electronic nodes all over the city. And it's fantastic what's going to be available for that. National Grid would love to own that and charge you for it. We believe you should own it, and even be able to charge for some of the services, or at least get them for free. So, the summary that we're asking you is to allow us to do the analysis for you. At the end of that, we'll be back, and that's when you'll have to choose whether you wish to purchase your lights or not purchase your lights. If you do decide to purchase them, you can take all of the savings, it's a discretion, it's your money, and you can invest some of it in LEDs or keep all of it, that's up to you. We will show you the costs and benefits of that. And there's more choices within LEDs and within these control systems. I'm not gonna go into that tonight unless you have a question about it. But it's a very, it's one of these detailed ones that for some reason I've learned about, and I could talk for hours about it, so let me spare you that. Basically, it's a savings plan. But the other side of it is Prism has already saved you money. Last year, National Grid made a proposal at the PUC, which I firmly believe that if we were not formally intervening there on behalf of the municipalities, would've cost you $386,000 over the next four or five years, not in your budget, not in your regular streetlights account. Last two months ago, National Grid made another proposal that would've cost you $42 per streetlight. That's about over $50,000. Next year, not budgeted, you don't know about it yet, it wouldn't have shown up until sometime mid to the end of next year, you'd have gotten a bill. Your money of streetlights bills would've had an extra $50,000 on it. This is the kind of advocacy that nobody's been doing at the PUC and Prism is doing. It's costing us a lot of money. It costs us a couple of thousand dollars a month, just in legal fees to do that. We don't have a pro bono attorney, the Library Association would love to have one of those. But the, this is really important work. Streetlights are more important than any of us knew, more important than I ever imagined. And I'd love your support to join Prism and drive in Compton, I just look up. So, I'm happy to address any questions that you have.
Any other questions from the council? Jeff?
Would there be, like a collaborative, as far as, alright, you talked about going LED. Who's gonna go around and change all those light bulbs? Who would maintain the light bulbs?
You got a ladder? No, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, that's a very good question, and the, it's important that professionals do this. We wrote, when we wrote the law two years ago, we specified that the, anyone who goes up the polls has to be a qualified electrical worker, which doesn't look like much, but that's an OSHA designation. It's a higher standard than a master, than a licensed electrician. They have to be licensed electricians, they have to be qualified electrical workers, it has to be an approved insulated bucket truck. So therefore, this is not the kind of thing that we expect any municipality to go and do with their own employees. You could hire and train employees to that standard, there's nothing that prevents you from doing that. That would be far more expensive than collaborative. We have, in fact, we have a pre-bid meeting Thursday of this week with electrical contractors, because we have signed agreements with, for communities across the state currently representing about 33,500 streetlights. And so, we're starting now to bring the contractors in, let them know about the project. It's not the formal bid. Formal, it will be a formal public bid, this is subject to Davis Bacon, and these will be electrical firms. We hope they're Rhode Island firms, but there's plenty of firms in local and nearby Massachusetts that also do this. We're anticipating three or four companies to handle the whole state. So, that's, they would handle the, from day one, the emergency and routine maintenance, if you want a new light or a light taken out, they would handle that, and they would handle the labor part of the conversion to LEDs. The equipment will be purchased for the LED also according to public procurement practices. But the contractors won't do that, we'll be handling that separately.
So, even if, my point being is, there's no meters on these. So if we were to put the LED bulb in, will this legislation require National Grid to then lower the amount, or whoever we're using, I guess there's a, we still have to pay National Grid for the line service, and then whoever we're buying the electricity from, whether it's National Grid or somebody else, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
How would the rates go down? Will the PUC require them, once we've saved the whole town, convert it over to LED? Would the PUC require them to reduce our rate?
Okay, let me break it down for you. That's one of those questions that I love to talk about. So, the, streetlights now are on an un-metered rate, okay? It was impractical in the past to meter streetlights. If you picture the meter on your house, you know, it's an electromagnetic machine, it's about this big, it's accurate plus or minus 2%. And there was just no way to put those on the poles up above the lights, you wouldn't be able to read them anyway. And so, grid developed a non, as did utilities across the country, they develop a non-metered rate, which takes the hours of darkness in each month and multiplies it by the kilowatt, by the wattage of the bulb, and they assume that there's 4,175 hours of darkness a year, so many hours in January or February, March. The tariff that you've been paying under is the S14, and that assumes that every light is on 100% on that low. And it also, there's a fudge factor in there. The most common light in total is a 50-watt high-pressure sodium. We're billed at 61 watts for that, okay? Now, it's not as bad as it sounds, because a 50-watt sodium really uses somewhere around 56 watts, but when we wrote the Investment Act and the tariff that implements it is the S05 tariff that you would switch to if you purchased your lights, that has a dimming schedule and it has an LED schedule in it that are not in the current tariff. So, you would get an immediate benefit, even if we don't read what I'll talk about next, the, so even if it's not metered, you still would get the benefit of the lights. Now, LED loads come in every wattage you can imagine, 34, 35, 36, depending on the brand. So, instead of writing a tariff that says, "A 50-watt bulb is this," there are buckets, and so, everything from 19 to 30 watts is billed at a certain amount in the middle and such like that. So, you get most of the savings, in fact, if we game it properly for you, you will get an even greater benefit than you would deserve because of the size of the bucket, and if we get a bulb at the top of it, I don't need to go into that kind of detail. This, because you'll hear all about this, probably one of you'll wanna hear about it later. However, we believe that that legislation passed two years ago called for making metering legal. It said right in it very specifically, it allows LED lighting in controls. Now, nobody puts meters along on streetlights. But we do, every streetlight now in your town has a little thing on it about this big that's a photocell that turns it on and off when it gets dark and light. That gets replaced with something about the size of a coffee cup, which connects to the next streetlight and the next one, and the next one. And that allows you from the public works desk, from the police dispatch desk, to dim the lights at will, to brighten them, you can turn them off, have them turn off at midnight, on the residential roads, but keep them going on the main roads. I mean, it's pretty cool what you can do. If there's an accident at a corner from the dispatcher, when he or she calls the responders, they also can brighten the lights up around there. It's just pretty good, something you've never been able to do. Well, that changes the consumption of electricity by the light. So, the control manufacturer said, "Well, let's just include a chip that meters the electricity." So, they put this little tiny chip in it, and I have one, I usually bring with me, and I thought, "I always bring this and I never have to show it." But there's a civic chip in there which meters the electricity plus or minus a half a percent. So, it's way more accurate than the one on this building or in my house or your house.
It's transmittable?
It transmits to the next one, it also stores 30 days of data. So, if the electricity goes out on that street, you know, maybe with a hurricane and it's out for three or four days, it just keeps track of anything that happens during that time, or what happened before, it reported in, they batch in. So, now, National Grid took the position at the PUC that nobody anticipated, it was very interesting, that we can put a controller on, and the controller's perfectly okay, but that one little chip in it doesn't worry, can't use that. I don't know where they got that idea, it just, you know, we sit there at the table with the leading cities and towns and us, it just makes no sense whatsoever, but that prevailed. So, the PUC has now required a tariff to check the accuracy of those metering chips, because we've protested, we've formally objected, and we have new legislation in right now that calls for this to be formally, it says, we use the word metering right in it, and it said that if the PUC approves metering, metering will be used for billing, and the towns can own the controller. Very specific, there's no ambiguity in it whatsoever anymore, we've learned. So, we think that about a year from now, the PUC will approve the use of this metering technology. It is far more accurate than now, and the un-metered rate that you're asking about is accurate on average, plus or minus about 7%, so it's way inaccurate. So, we'd be going from plus or minus 7 to plus or minus a half a percent. The nice thing about it is all of the communities that choose to put these in, by the time the PUC decides, you're gonna have a lot of data saying that grid is charging us $100,000 for this, it should've been $77,000. So, the more towns that choose these controllers, the stronger position we'll all have at the end of the pilot for the PUC. I think that's a much longer answer than you want.
No, I've got things that we're using.
Okay, thank you.
Another question?
Jeff, I think it's a little bit of a word now about process, is your summary sheet does include that, I think for the record, if you would just explain to the public the steps we have to take to participate, this one we have to choose to do.
The first step is to join Prism. You don't have to to buy your lights, but if you join Prism, it'll do all the work for you, and as you can tell from this discussion, it's a pretty specialized field. Prism will then analyze for you, present a cost benefit, okay? If you then say, "Okay, this makes total fiscal sense for Tiverton, we wanna proceed", then we would order the closing documents for you. Some of them our attorney would prepare, some of the grid's attorney would prepare, and you would then, when those are executed, approved and executed, so we'd be back here three or four times during that process. And we probably will also ask you to establish a committee to work with us, that's between the council and the administrator as to how that happens within your town. And so, once you decide to buy your lights, before you make that decision, you'll also decide whether you wanna do LEDs right then or not, and whether you wanna do controls. You'll have all of the data. I've just seen the draft that we've prepared for Providence, that was the first town to sign on, and it's pretty complete, they don't know exactly what they wanna do. And the, so, once you've seen the analysis and you said, "Okay, we're gonna choose to purchase our lights, Prism managed them for us, and we're gonna convert to LEDs, reduce maybe a quarter of the savings or half the savings to convert to LEDs, keep the other half of the savings, and, but we're not gonna do controls right now." I mean, that's probably the most logical outcome for a town like Tiverton. And if you do that, then we would have a closing. That day, you would own your lights, you would pay those $65,000 or whatever the number ends up being, it'll be a little, most towns have gone down a little bit as we head towards this. And the, after the closing, you would own your lights and be responsible for them, our contractor would be on board the day you buy the lights, so there's no broken coverage. You have to have that coverage right away. I mean, if somebody runs into a pole, you need somebody to go right out there, you know, it's gonna happen. Then the LED conversion would be scheduled. The, then the LED, the LED conversion would be scheduled, the, the ideal would be to do it as soon as possible, usually, simply because you get the savings. The LEDs are usually, we expect to be purchased under a municipal, a tax exempt municipal lease, but if a town had, you know, a hundred thousand dollars sitting in there or leftover bond fund from a highway plan or something like that, that could be used towards it either before or after. Any, any financing is up to the town, we will help procure the financing. The other option on financing that we all may have as an opportunity is the Gamas Infrastructure Bank, they are specifically expect, specifically including streetlights in that. I don't know if it's going to be happening fast enough, but, or if it's going to happen, we don't, we don't know that yet. But it would, if it does come to fruition as it's currently described, instead of about a two-point-six percent tax exempt municipal lease, we'd be in the one-point-seven percent. So it would be certainly beneficial to go that route if it's opened up. And after that, then it's a matter of paying lease payments, paying PRISM to manage the lights, and your lights will be on way more often. I mean, the light in front of my house, I'm a great example of this, it started to blink, the sodium lights blink for a couple of months when they start to go out. I called it into National Grid, I was a good citizen. It's three years later, it hasn't been fixed yet, okay? We promised you, and it's right in all of the contracts, four-day turnaround on repairs. If it's an emergency like it's at a critical intersection, two hours, we'll be out there. So it's a, it's, this is a way different animal in terms of the maintenance than you've seen before. And LED lights, if, if you look now, try to identify colors when you're driving home tonight, under the sodium lights. Your headlights are better, but the sodium lights that are on the side, on the, in the streetlights, try to tell if it's dark green, or dark blue, or dark red, the color in front of you. Won't be able to tell unless your headlights are shining on it. LED lights are true color, colors pop. Police officers love them. In, in Boston, we got a tour by the police department because they just love these lights of how, how they can tell colors. And you, do you even have the LED light time covered?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
These are kind of too technical, how, what's the life expectancy on these LEDs that pretty much got to be way more than sodium?
Yeah, the, the life expectancy on the sodium lights like you have here in waterfront communities is about eighteen months. That surprises me, it doesn't look like they get repaired that often, but that's what National Grid reports, and that's what the national statistics show. The LEDs have not been tested to their limit yet, they expect it to be about twenty years or more. But they've only been, the current version, well, new ones are coming out all the time, so, but the ones that are similar to the current, when they went to the chip onboard design, those have been in for about five years. I just, this last week was talking to someone at the Pacific Northwest Labs, Northwest Labs, which is part of the U.S. Department of Energy that, that handles solid-state lighting technologies. And he said that they're national, they're just doing a national survey, and out of over a million lights that are installed, that are LEDs of the chip onboard design, the, the failure rate is point zero zero, point zero eight percent, oh, we got the zeros rate, it's one-tenth of one percent failure annually. There's a little more of that when you first turn one out of the box, but it's still less than one percent. So very low failure rate compared to what you have now. And we're going to run the numbers for you, anticipate that you'll have to replace them at twenty years. And expectations you have that we won't.
Presumably that after the ten-year lease and the warranty period is over, you, you have sort of a whole ownership of that for the next ten years, and then you should expect to have to start replacing some of them.
That's correct.
The other question I had is, how do we, how do we treat new additions to the streetlight portfolio, so to speak, going forward? A new subdivision goes in, or, because I know there's a process we deal with now, it's National Grid asks us to put a, a light up on a pole, we get grant the permission, are we now responsible for fielding those, those calls ourselves? You know, the planning board says, "All right, this subdivision needs four streetlights," boom, boom, and now we, we go with our contractor and say, "Put in four streetlights?"
Well, usually in a new subdivision, the contractor that builds the subdivision puts the poles in. And pays the bill until it gets turned over to the town when the, when the street is accepted as a public street. I'm trying to remember, there's a detail about this that doesn't work well in the Streetlights Act, and the reason for it, we wrote it, that worked perfectly well, National Grid made a change at the PUC, we argued against it and did not prevail on that, I don't even remember what it is now, but it's about the timing, I know what it is. It, it's, it was to allow the municipal rate to be paid on the streetlight from the day it's put in place, even before it's turned over to the town. And the PUC said, "No, they're going to have the, when it's connected to a temporary service for the contractor, he'll, he or she will be paying it under the, under the CNI rate that they use, and then it'll switch to the S fourteen rate or the SO five rate." It should be handled just normally, you would then pay the maintenance of it. So the developer puts it in, and then you would take over the maintenance, just like you do the rest of the lights. It's a good example, though, because the new subdivisions are mostly standalone poles with underground wiring.
Right.
Most of your lights in Tiverton are not, they're overhead wiring. So when you purchase the assets, as I described earlier, usually, you're not buying the poles that have the electric distribution system and everything else on them, all you're buying is the arm and the light, and the wire that feeds it.
Most of them are connected to telephone poles in, in most of our side streets and things like that, they don't have a standalone.
They mostly don't, every once in a while, though, there's needing to be a light at an intersection, and there was not a utility pole, so if there's a freestanding pole that just has a light on it, you buy it on that too, and that's included in this price. And, and similarly, in new subdivisions, it would be that way. So the, the new subdivisions, the wiring is separable, but in the older subdivisions, all of the wiring is in a single conduit, not a conduit, trunk in the ground, there's a name for it. And, and that's a place where we're going to have problems in the future, because the light goes out, we go out to it, there's no power to it, what bears the problem? Is it, is it our connection down there, we can only go in that handhold a certain distance, then it has to be good? They're going to come out and say, "It's your fault," we're going to tell them it's their fault, we know that's going to happen, I, I don't know how to get around that.
I suppose it's the price of evolution.
It's the next step.
I have a little more thing I would ask you to talk about, Jeff, and it is, we spoke about LED quality of light, can you speak a little bit more about controlling where the light comes? Yeah, I have a question, because in the South, we turn on one third of the lights, and we have this strange cultural backlash where people are used to living in an open area, and the wash from other lights makes it bright at night, people feel, quote-unquote, safe. So, do you think there's going to be any difficulty in your life with highly-directed LED lights that you focus on the ground instead of washing out to the neighborhood?
Well, I'd love to say no, there won't be any problems. There are many fewer problems than people expect. We've talked to people all over the country, I've polled every community I've heard of that's installing LEDs, I put it on my ticker, I call them a couple of months later, and, and I was called LA recently, because they've now hit a hundred and forty thousand LED lights that they've put out. And that's, Rhode Island has only a hundred thousand streetlights in the state of Rhode Island, so, so LA alone has put in more, one and a half times what we have. They said remarkably few. Now, an LED light, you have to be very careful specifying the light. There's a lot of manufacturers hitting the market, and there's a few manufacturers that have been in it for a long, long time and make very reliable lights. Cree, GE, Leotec, Acuity Brands, this Cooper, there's a couple. Most of the, like, a lot, there's a lot of Chinese companies trying to come into this market, some of them are very reliable companies that have been in business a long time. But we want to make sure that if you invest in LED lights, you've got something that the company is going to be around for a long time to help it, because these are long warranties. A sodium light, you could care less. So, now the sodium light is a, it's a, it's a fairly efficient bulb, almost efficient as an LED. It's encased in a globe, that's what you see on these Cobra headlights, you see this globe at the bottom. That absorbs forty percent of the light and diffuses it out in all directions, that's why you get the sky glow. The LEDs prevent, they, they have a much sharper cutoff, and so there's not as much that goes up into the sky. So the general sense isn't brighter, but they direct it down and there's, there are five patterns of light you can buy, I'm not going to go into what they all are, but if you have an area with a sidewalk, you'll buy one that's a much more linear along the side of the road. If you have a light that's over an intersection, you'll buy much more with the round. We would do that design for you light by light by light, because almost, you know, most of them are going to be this, this type three that's an intermediate, that's what almost everything will be. But every once in a while, this, now, the other thing is that car headlights used to be really terrible, and you had to use the streetlights to light the center of the road. You don't now, the safer designs are much more of the streetlights being on the side of the road, because the headlights are really good. You want to light the side where broken-down cars are, emergency vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, and all of that, when all the obstructions are. And so that fits with what, with, with your question, the perception is that it's brighter when you're walking on the road, even if the amount of light is less. So I think it handles it pretty well. And I'll give you an example, when we were in Boston and we jumped on a bus, this was at a, at a, at a streetlights meeting of all things, and sixty of us got on a bus and we drove into Southie, and, and it's not the Southie of when I was a teenager, I mean, the first thing I saw, anyway, they parked us on a street with sodium lights, we walked a half a block and turned the corner into LEDs. So this is this little residential street of all these triple-deckers, and all of a sudden, sixty people walking around, and half of them are geeks with light meters in their hands, you know, and, and so all of a sudden, somebody shouts out from the second-floor porch, "What the hell are you guys doing down there?" And we said, "We're looking at streetlights," and I thought, "Oh my God, you know what's going to happen now?" And they said, "We love those streetlights, come on up and look at them." They just, they just, they said this, "I can tell that the grass is green," I mean, we had a long conversation, this guy came out on this porch and was talking about it, "The grass is green," and just loves it. So there's a real perception that they like it, so, and that's just not that one example, there, there are many. But if you put one in, and say, the more often problem is that it's too bright, and it glares back on Mrs. Jones' bedroom window. So all the really good brands have these little snap-on or screw-on glare guards that can go, that just dip deep in the angle in one, on one side, you can put them on all four sides. So if you're in a cul-de-sac, sometimes it's perfect on this side, but it shines across the road, so you have to put one of these in the front. You get one with, or two with every light. And, and that's another thing to look in the specs, I look, one of the very big brands, Good Lights, showed me the glare guard, and it's a piece of powder-coated steel that snaps in place. Well, if you live through hurricanes, something that snaps in place is not going to be there after a hurricane, and powder-coated steel, that won't last long along the water fence around anyway. That same company now has a thick plaster will tie it on with two screws, so obviously they had a problem with it. But the specifications are critical, the design of what light and where is critical, it's, it's, it's not just a, take out a bulb and put another one in.
Any other questions from the council?
Just the one of, from Matt, how many streetlights do we have somewhere in the range?
I think it says right there, one thousand three hundred something.
One thousand three hundred ninety-six. All right. So that's, that's our, our membership fee for the, for joining PRISM, essentially a dollar per.
Dollar figure, that's correct.
Any other questions from the council? Chief Lloyd, did you have a question?
Mr. Lloyd, thank you, I just, just a very quick, I was listening to your presentation, and Chief Blakey was just kind of feeling me a little bit. Did I hear you say correctly that in emergencies, we can control the function of the lights, streetlights, we can turn the lights on or off in an emergency situation, did I hear that correctly?
If the community chooses to install the intelligent controllers, then yes, from the public works desk or from the police dispatch desk, you can turn any one light on, off, make it brighter, you can make it flash. There's one brand which will, if you have an evacuation route, you can set it to, the lights to flash sequentially along the route. Now, in areas where you have evacuations and hurricanes and stuff, that may be a good thing, most of the brands don't get to that level. But yes, and usually when you buy an LED light, you may buy, you may take out a hundred-watt sodium, put in a forty-two-watt LED and run it at twenty-four watts. So you're, you're getting a seventy-five watt basically savings in power and consumption and cost. But if you need brightness for, for an incident, from the public works desk or the police desk, the brightness turn to, much, much brighter.
And that is controlled how through Wi-Fi or?
It's a, it's a low-level mesh network, it's a, it's a self-healing network, there's a little, essentially a tiny radio on each node, on each node, there's one node on each streetlight. It's a little coffee cup thing, this again, I wish I brought it, and it goes, it, so it talks to the next one and the next one, but it also talks to the ones on the next street, so that if, if the power is out on this street, you'll still get the connection through. If the power's totally out, the lights are off anyway, you don't have any choice. But if the power's out up here, but not over there, then maybe it'll still talk back to the controller, and you can brighten, dim, or turn this one on or off.
Again, to get back to perhaps either dispatch or public works, is that through hard-line phone lines, or is that going to be, could that possibly be through a Wi-Fi network?
It's, 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 most of the installations, the mesh network goes from light to light, and then every thousand lights, or less if there's topography differences, a lot of tree cover and stuff, you might have to have one for every two-hundred or four-hundred lights, there's what's called a gateway. The gateway either connects to the fiber, if there's a fiber system available there, or connects cellular back to your desk, so there is, there is a connection there, it can be wired, some towns own a fiber system that could be used for that. So that would be designed, that particular network would be designed, community by community. It's pretty standard, till you get to the gateway, then the gateway is whatever works best, whatever is the least cost and highest reliability for the community.
Are you aware of FirstNet? Have you heard of FirstNet? We disintegrate with FirstNet.
Some of the brands integrate, some of them do not. Some of them are entirely proprietary, and some of them are more open source. The one we like is Silver Springs, which is the most open source of any of them, but I don't know the answers whether that one integrates or not, is that the system you have in place?
We're working, I'm working on that right now. Okay, thank you.
It also integrates with Tripus, which is another one for that, that's what's being, Silver Springs is being integrated with Tripus in Brooklyn, in Buffalo, New York. So it's an issue that they all know about. So if you have, are you procuring it now or going to develop?
It's in the development stage for the state of Rhode Island.
Okay, then I'll find out the details, I should know that answer then, and I don't, I apologize.
No, no, that's why I was asking the question.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions from the council? Now, would you like us to bring G two forward so that we can file an appeal?
I think it would be efficient, because if you have any further questions, or if the attorney does, we could.
I intend to adjourn the motion to bring G two up to present.
I move that we move G two out of order into, just after B two.
Second.
First, but then second, others in paper.
Aye.
Now, town administrator requests council authority to sign a participation agreement with PRISM.
Madam President, I think you may have garnered from Mr. Broadhead's presentation that there probably is not another human being alive who knows more about streetlights. And one of the few things I learned in my school was, if you find somebody who is that interested in the details, in a very finely granulated body of knowledge, you need to latch on to people like that. They will save you money, they will save you trouble, and they'll help you think about the future. In the business consulting world, we often spoke of the not-too-distant future of convergence, convergence between telecommunications, electrical power, and some of the other, and you're seeing this discussion now. The Electrical Power Group, their participation in convergence is the network that they've built over many, many years, all these wires that come through all of our homes, and have tremendous value, and that is why National Grid fights the idea of municipalities owning their own streetlights, because they need the ability to participate in the construction of, and the profitable operation of, the mesh network in the future. But just for now, just dollars and cents, now, it's kind of a dirty little trick that happens a lot in corporate America, it's cost allocation. I have a whole bucket of costs, I don't know how I'm going to pay for them, so I allocate them across my infrastructure, and I charge everybody a little fee, and nobody ever pays any attention, nobody ever notices, until somebody, like Jeff and his folks, come along and say, "Hey, why are you guys paying ninety-five bucks a year to maintain a streetlight?" The real costs don't come out to that much, and it's because there's an allocation after allocation. his folks, come along and say, "Hey, why are you guys paying ninety-five bucks a year to maintain the streetlight?" The real costs don't come out to that much. And it's because there's an allocation after allocation after allocation of costs. Basically, the taxpayers of the town are subsidizing some other part of the network by paying such exorbitant rates for maintenance. So I've, I've heard and dismissed all the critics of Prism. I've done my due diligence, spoken to a lot of people. I know their attorney. He's a very smart guy, he's been involved. But anybody who's willing to get into the trenches and fight the PUC, I think is a worthy advocate for the town. So, the resolution that I've, what I've asked you for is the authorization to enter into the participation agreement. I will, of course, make sure we go through the agreement very carefully with legal counsel. But if legal counsel doesn't have any specific objections, it would be my intention, if authorization was granted, to enter into the agreement as soon as possible. So that we could use, we could start next fiscal year with the possibility of getting right into the program.
Now, the one-time system purchase of sixty-five thousand and change, will we get that money from?
Well, we're going to have to talk about how the financing is structured. We need to work within the budget for streetlights. We try to make this work. So we have a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. This is why the timing is critical. If we start at the beginning of the fiscal year, we may have the cash to pull this off. If we wait too long, we have to wait another year and go, probably go back into the budget process and ask for extra. Now, we'd like to start saving as soon as possible, I assume.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council? This time I intend to take a motion.
I move that we grant authorization, an authority to the Town Administrator to sign a participation agreement with Prism of Street Light Management Services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd at least like to read the agreement before it is signed. I was hoping it would at least would ask, can we just hold off till next meeting so we can see exactly what we're getting into? I haven't had a lot of time to digest this. I'd like to read the agreement, what we're getting into as far as.
The, did you read, what was in your packet of all the?
I've read most of it, but I'd like to see what the agreement is and I'd like, you know, to take a little more time to research this maybe. It has to be done this meeting? Like I said, all I'm asking for is authorization. And if, I think if you, I can't really bind the town anyway. I think I could enter a TA and I'd have to come back to you with a signed contract. But to be, we get to make very efficient use of our time.
I agree.
So if we could, if I could at least get the ball rolling with the TA and so they have some guidance into where they're going with us, and we get an allocation of their time, it reflects the potential commitment. Any questions you arrive at, councilman? I would ask that you get them to legal counsel or to me as quickly as possible so that we could ratify, finalize all of this in the first, first week of June, first meeting in June.
Well, at this point, I have a, I do have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
What would be the effective date on this participation agreement?
Well, I think we're shooting for July 1st. Then we're shooting for a fiscal year start.
Okay.
But again, I don't want the perfect to get in the way of the good. So if it were August 1st or September 1st, it's whatever folks comfort level is. But I kind of see this as a project sitting there waiting to be done. An awful lot of the work on the legal side has already been completed through this tariff rate filing process. So we are, we're at this point at the customer who can decide at what time they wants to buy, but when it does, the thing will start right away.
Madam President, I'd just like to say a few words. Well, I think we all want to see what the contract is going to look like eventually. And I think, you know, we have to put a trust in the Town Administrator who is not going to put us in some kind of a bind. And again, we have to approve this out of our turn anyway. So let's not go into the process and let's continue.
It will be reviewed by our council also.
Absolutely.
Before Matt would do anything, so. Okay, I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Advertised public hearing, Town Administrator amendments to fees and fine resolution, including but not limited to recreation fees, continued till June 8th. It was supposed to be at this point, right?
Yeah.
Right, it's advertised, so.
It's advertised, okay.
The recreation portion was unable to meet as they had planned. And I'm not sure the council, the work is being done. So the Police Department and I have exchanged a couple memos back and forth. I have their work to spot check, but I think they've identified virtually every statute that authorizes the fines and fees that they charge. They've spent some alterations and there will be a request for an alteration, actually to come into compliance with some of those laws. So the work is ongoing, but by June 8th, I think we'll be in shape to at least deal with recreation and police.
Thank you. Do we need, we don't need anything, correct Nancy? Or do you need a motion? It was, all right.
I move that we continue the public hearing until June 8th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
I just have a quick note to the Town Administrator. When we get to talking about zoning and planning and building, give us a heads up so that we can, I've got a list of things for that.
Thank you.
Maybe I can get a question I had about five years ago answered finally.
Town Council City is a board of licensing, non-advertised license, BJ Allen Company DBA Phantom Fireworks, 525 Main Road, request approval of holiday and fireworks license from June 10th, 2015 to July 10th, 2015, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is this the license that they had last year? Yes. You can come forward to you.
My name is Brian Hodge, I'm representing BJ Allen. I just noticed here that you have 525 Main Road. That's the place we had a couple years ago. It's 526 this year. I just wanted to make sure that was correct, all other information was accurate.
Thank you.
She went back and pulled up with them for these staff. Everything I have on the document, it says 525. I believe it is across the street at 526.
That's the below Hot Dog Stadium?
Right.
The Hot Dog Stadium? That's odd, that's. That's odd. It could be odd, the odd side of the road. The western side of Main Road is odd numbers, the eastern side is even numbers.
Hmm, that's what you're saying.
So it should, if it's, if it's either 525 or 526, it ought to be 525.
Well, that's what we have on the business, 525.
Any other?
Matt, I will request this, 525. I will have the license clerk check it again, make sure we're at the, but it is in front of the Secana, the old Secana hat door, a place.
It's in front of?
It's in front of there, isn't that what you do it?
Yes. 526 Main Road, June 10th, dates for July 10th, June 10th, June 10th, October 10th, November 11th, and I expect the delivery, I'm going to get his consent, and G. Morgan Product List and Waits, and he's already scheduled to come check it out, to check out the building and product.
Yes.
Sorry?
So this is the fire marshal?
Yes. He's coming out June 10th at 4:30.
Madam President, and I, I actually, we went through this with him because they had three different addresses. And we have the email and everything from them, please put everything in 525 Main Road.
So.
So, checking in with them, but everything you've sent me, including May 6th, which also went to the Rhode Island tax office to please change everything to 525. So we'll confirm the address.
Okay. But yours is going with 526.
He does, but everybody else has spoke to us.
Why is that? They think it's going to be?
I have no idea. They're supposed to come to me with the address, I don't want to cut the addresses.
Thank you. This is kind of odd.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is, parcel number is what we ought to be referencing in the future on these things. It's left blank on this form, but that way we don't get confused with the addresses and things like that, and license the wrong parcel.
But, but you don't think it should be 525?
I'm not saying it any, all I'm saying is that the west side of Main Road is odd numbered, the even side is, I mean, the even side is the east side. It's been that way since I've been around, but.
525 is the correct address. We've sent several messages on it, several conversations, and it's in writing from this staff, from their accountant, BJ Allen Company Phantom Fireworks in Ohio. Specific request, please make it 525.
And, I will just, I'm not an attorney, but I will point again that in my cursory view of the assessor's records, there is neither a 525 nor a 526 Main Road. And so we should go by the parcel number when we license operations.
This, this parcel is 525 through 531 Main Road in the tax assessor's database. There is no 526. There's a 520 and there's a 544 on the even side.
Well, I can, I can take my office, I have it squared and I have my problem. I'm on issue.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, this is a hearing, I'm sorry.
Chief, do you want to say something?
I was listening to that also. There were usually two competing. One is in the old Secana dogs and then there was another one across the street in Allstate. And Mr. Pelletier is correct. Even is on the east side, odd is on the west side. So whichever this number is, whether it's 525, but Marshall Murphy has gone over their plans with them. He's not able to come visit it until they get their stock in sight, or on the site. So I would suggest, yeah, we get the correct address, because that's the number we have that is 525 and we went by what they put down. So we'll have to double check on that in the morning.
We can certainly make a motion.
Yeah, we certainly, it's pending, well.
Is this an open?
No, it's not advertised.
Well, I'd make a motion that we grant a holiday and fireworks license from June 10th, 2015 to July 10th, 2015, 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM for BJ Allen Company doing business as Phantom Fireworks with an address of 525 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements, including certification inspection by the fire marshal and the confirmation of the parcel number and address.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Appointments and resignations, Conservation Commission term to expire April 15th, 2018, 18, Richard Guimond, 36 Neck Road. A lot of us do know you, but if you wanted to briefly.
Yes, I live on Neck Road. I've been on the commission for the last number of years. And as some of you know, like, I was a deep sea fisherman and I'm very in tune with the environment. And conservation in this town is very important, especially with the two watersheds that we have that are in dire need of conservation. So I'm re-upping, if you want me to re-up.
Any questions from the council? Entertain a motion?
I move that we reappoint Mr. Richard Guimond of 37 Neck Road to a term of my Conservation Commission to expire 4/15/18.
Second.
And thank him for his service.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Richard, you re-upped.
Thank you.
Financial business, Town Administrator requests transfer of funds from account 3310-69235 Chief Seminar to account 3310-6935, telephones for $2,000. Town Administrator left to me.
Sure. Some of the phone lines that run our, operate our radio system, their fees have blown up and then one set of those was transferred over from the Police Department. So this is to cover the shortfall. I had planned on attending a conference, but I just, it's more important that we get this paid for. So this is to cover a shortfall in that account.
Anything to add? Do you have anything to add about that transfer?
Okay, I just, one quick question, Chief. In our equipment service contracts, you're pretty much full up in your budget, so we budgeted almost exactly what you need.
Right.
Which one of these changed that allowed this cash to come free for this?
Out of the equipment service contracts?
Yeah.
No, the other radios, they dropped their fees as to what we were quoted last year because of our older radio equipment.
How much do you have for it?
It'll be under CyberCom.
Oh, CyberCom.
CyberCom handles all our radio work.
So you had a $2,900 contract and it's down to what now?
That one, I don't have that right off the top of my head, sir.
You've taken 24 from it, so you must have a lot of savings.
When we search through other accounts, I don't have the breakdown available, there are a couple other ones that are down too, but we do have the money in those, in that service account to cover this.
I've got the numbers as far as April, I believe. In 6443, you had $11,000 in it. And in the seminars, it's wiped out.
Any questions from the council? I intend to take a motion.
I move that we authorize a transfer of funds from account 3310-6923 and 3310-6443, respectively, to 3310-6935 for $2,000 and $2,400 respectively.
Motion. Are you doing, okay, motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
There's no second and I have discussions.
Second.
Sorry. I have a question though. You put both of these together? I was just doing the first.
It's the same account.
Okay.
It's.
It's from?
It's from two separate accounts to.
It's from two separate accounts to one account.
To one account.
All right.
Yeah, I put them together, yeah, sorry.
Okay, no, it's, that's what was confusing me, okay. Discussion.
Yes. Can we explain this a little bit more? Because it seems like there's a disconnect here. There's, this is for, what, this is for telephones?
These are for telephone lines, we also, because of our radio system, have to have leased lines which connect the fire stations together.
Right.
To connect the remote receivers together. Those leased lines, we have to pay Verizon for. They jump their fees at any time without even talking about it. They don't even discuss with us on it. They've jumped up considerably over the past year. They're called RTNA lines. The RTNA lines have gone up to a cost that beyond what was budgeted because they jumped in the middle of the year. And we had picked up, I was paying for an electrical bill for the Hamble Road and Chief Blakey unbeknownst had a, another repeater line of the radio system that was in his budget. We transferred those to item so that he was paying for what he was using and I am paying for what I'm using. But it was an increase in my budget plus the cost of the lines that we hadn't budgeted for. So I'm trying to cover the shortfall because telephone for those leased lines will be short.
And that's, that total impact of that was $4,400?
That will get us through to July 1st.
And?
Because we have two more months to pay for it.
And so is that a prorated amount or is this just the, the net impact? When did we find out about the fee increase, first of all?
I believe it was, I want to say August or September.
And is that an annual?
It's a monthly bill that comes up.
No, I'm saying, is that, is this the, the impact of the annual contract? What I'm asking is, you're saying this is going to get us through the next two months. If I follow logic, that means that $2,200 a month is what we should expect an increase of going forward.
That's correct.
Do we have that budgeted going forward?
No.
No, that's been cut on both sides of the budget. It'll be a problem again next year. I am, right now, I'm meeting with Director Anna from Rhode Island, she may tomorrow to look at a grant to try to get rid of our leased phone lines.
It was actually cut $5,000. It's $18,000 for next year.
So we're going to have a shortfall.
That's our budget. That's our budget.
Six or $8,000?
Yes, sir.
Actually, if we budgeted 18.5, the electors' budget cut it to 18. And your request was, just so we have this straight, your request was how much?
I'm sorry, sir?
What was your request for the repeater, for the phone lines?
I don't have that in front of me, I don't remember exactly what the overall budget request was for that.
18.5.
18.5. So it stayed the same from the director?
Correct.
And as the costs are going up, the petitioner's budget seeks to cut it. I just want to make it clear that this is an area we're going to have to focus on, because we had this discussion in the wintertime before we got deep into the budget process, that this is not an effective or efficient communication system for...
No, it's not.
It's far too expensive, and the low-hanging fruit is streetlights and life insurance. Radio communications for public safety is the next, probably fire more than police is the area to target next, because it's just too expensive. And just to go back, a little inside baseball between the chief and I, in account 3310-6443, you've got about 15 service contracts, that average about $2,000 each in value. The highest is about $5,400 for Zoll, and then you've got a small one for your structure maintenance.
Right.
So basically, CyberCom has made some adjustment to this $2,900 service contract that's allowing you to make this transfer. Well, that's the bulk of what you save from this account to get this done.
Right. And also, going forward, I'm in light of that, and knowing that next year we're going to be in problems, is that I am meeting, I am putting in for Homeland Security Grant, and the reason I was asking the questions on the streetlights is because whether we do or we don't, and I know that's more expense to the system, but if I can use that as another hook into a Homeland Security Grant as a security measure, it helps favorably with my grant of $250,000 I'm looking for.
Well, and you sure play together with Code Red as well.
Absolutely.
We're going to become very good at this, communication business. Chief's looking at me funny because he's not thinking away, I think, but the point is, it will no longer take X amount of time for an incident to be reported, and X amount of time for dispatch, and X amount of time for response. If we're able to narrow the gap on all three legs of that communication triangle and respond more quickly.
Right.
Except for TPD, because they're on it all the time. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? All right, motion's been made in second, all those in favor, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Town Administrator requests transfer in DPW of $4,306.49 from account 54406795 to account 55406648, repairs and tires. Mr. Bellucci?
Thank you, Madam President. Resumet, ramification of our snowstorms this winter, where we kept depleting our repair account. Our sweeper was out all that time for repairs since last August. They worked on it off and on, this resulting in a bill of $4,306.49, which really didn't solve the entire problem. Right now, our sweeper really only can handle half the weight it usually does for dumping, so we're basically traveling twice as much to do the same amount of sweeping. That's a problem with the pump. We got it going, it's broken down twice since in the last week or so. It's a pretty doomed machine, it's just on its last legs. We've got it going, but this is an old bill for the services provided previously, like I said, it didn't completely fix the problem. We only have $1,000 left on our repair account to get us through till June 30th. That's why I'm requesting this money come out of our drainage account. We're not doing so much drainage because we're busy fixing all the roads. So we're stacked up, you know, a whole season now because of, because of the road situation, so. This is the only fund available that I have that we could do a transfer out of right now, and that's why I'm questioning it to be transferred out of the drainage account.
Steve, I have a handful of questions. The first is, when do you expect, how quickly will you receive funding for the new street sweeper? How quickly can you go out to bid for the new street sweeper? And what will this thing get, get us in scrap or whatever?
Okay, we've been trying to...
Or anything?
I just met last Wednesday with EDM, after a little bit of confusion, they have approved the 50% funding of the grant we applied for, which included a new vac-all, similar to what we have. In the interim, we kind of changed course and learned that when the vac-all's down, we can't sweep the streets, and we can't clean catch basins, so we're trying to separate the services. So we're going just for a street sweeper, an Elgin Pelican, they call it. They've approved the grants, we have to go out to bids. When we do go out to bids, we have to purchase the machine and basically file for the grant payment. Under the grant, they will pay 80% of their half right up front after we make the purchase, 10 more percent of their half after the first year and we do a report, and 10 more percent of their half the second year after we do a report on the findings. Also, because it is an air quality type of grant, last Wednesday I was made aware that we're going to have to purchase a sweeper that's vacuum-assisted. In other words, it's vacuuming up all the dust instead of blowing it, you know, vacuuming up the hard stuff and blowing dust in the air. That's adding $35,000 onto the cost. So originally, I came before you with a price of $196, and that was a pretty good price that we expected the bid to be, and now we have a cost added of $35,000 as a requirement of this grant. But that hasn't been accounted for. As far as the old sweeper, again, we hope to keep this going so we can get the new one. We can advertise anytime. Obviously, we can't award till after July 1st with new budget money. We're partnering up with several other communities that were at the grant meeting, that are buying similar machines, or the exact same machines, so we can put out a multiple bid. So we go through every effort to keep the price down as low as possible. We intend to take our old sweeper and remove the whole back of it and turn it into a clamshell catch baser cleaner, in which we're going to have to buy the clamshell maybe in a year or so. So we have the rest of the truck that we can build. So that's the overall plan, and I think that answered all your questions.
Yes, it does, thank you.
If I could just add to Steve's presentation, I try not to pat myself on the back, but if nobody else knows to, then I have to. The idea to get together with the other communities, to buy the sweeper together, is part of how we try to run the administrator's office now. And we found out that the grant was for the same type of equipment for several different communities. So the next time I was at the League of Cities and Towns board meeting, I was able to actually speak to my colleagues who serve in other communities together and through emails, and say, hey, if you guys are going to go out and gain Elgin, there's only one source, we all know where it is, it's in Pluth County, Massachusetts. Unless we want to ship the thing from Bloody, Missouri, it's going to come from one, so we're going to get together, use our bargaining power, Town Lincoln, Town Coventry, others that are in the market for this right now, and try to, even if we can knock a few thousand dollars off each unit, I'd much rather come to the table, ask them for five or six, because they're very expensive, it's almost a million-dollar order, than come to the table, buying together rather than apart.
Million-dollar order for the five or six, not for one.
Correct.
Somebody that thinks we're...
No, no, I'm doing the math in my head, five times 200,000 is a million.
Millions of repairs we've made to the last...
All right, well, Ivan would make a motion, then, that we authorize the transfer of $4,306.49 from account 5540695 to account 55406648, for the DPW director to pay the bills on the vac-all machine.
Second.
I have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Yes, stay right where you are. New business DPW director Bellucci requests authorization for purchase of town park recycling and trash recycling clothes, subject to terms and conditions provided, not to exceed $20,000.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a follow-up from our last meeting, I was asked to see if we could find out whether these particular bins that we're recommending for purchase had a patent number or followed that realm of getting a patent. I wasn't able to find that out from the manufacturer, but I'm sure, I assure you that we've done due diligence, researching everything that's available, and these particular bins have a five-year warranty, they weigh 200 pounds, and they get the C-10 proof, a security lock system, and the visual appealing. That's why we've recommended these particular bins for purchase. I've done research with Patriot Disposal for Councilor Sousa, and found out that they will supply 20 sets of totes to fill our parks, very similar to these, not similar to these, but the same number, same locations, and collect, supply and collect the rubbish in recycling twice a week for $1,200 a month. So that's what I was asked to do. Patriot can provide the service much cheaper than anyone else, because they're going to use, under the stipulation Patriot put out, they're going to use the trucks they're using now, they're just going to make other stops. And there's also a stipulation that if a load gets contaminated, that the town is going to be responsible for that charge at Resource Recovery, which will probably be about $400 a dump. The way the recyclers can be contaminated in parks is people throw their stuff in these bins now that are covered more or less, and they're hooked up and just dumped. So right now, a rubbish company visually picks up and looks in the bins that are dumping, the recycling bins, so the last charge I sent to them, and I made them pay, because they're looking at it, they're dumping it in the back of their trucks. They're responsible, as far as I'm concerned, for contaminated loads. This changes, this changes the stakes, we don't have that control, and we can't blame them for that control any longer. So that's a jeopardy that we put ourselves in versus collecting the rubbish ourselves. And we could also do some kind of combination, you know, but in any case, that's the information I have so far.
Okay, please. I'm just wondering, how are kind of, how are these guys going to get all the recyclers from the can up to the, the mirth, up to the...
They collect them, they collect them in the back of the trailer, we have a trailer, a dump trailer that goes on...
So they're going to dump the bottles and cans in the back of the trailer?
Right.
And then, so they do a track run, then they do a recycle run?
Yes.
All right, and then they go where?
They go into the landfill.
They're going to drive that little one-ton trail all the way to the landfill?
That's where, that's where, that's where it all goes, that's where Patriot will be bringing it also.
Well, we kind of only pick up, it's all mixed, and it just goes straight to the landfill. But what I'm saying, what I was saying was...
Wait a minute, hold on. Hang on a second. Our trash and recycling at the parks and beaches and things is not mixed, especially not the parks.
Well, we only have one trash bin at the beach, there's one trash can. So people walk up and they drop everything in that one trash can. And then our guys dump it into that little one-ton trail that we have, that pulls behind the pickup truck, and they take it up to the landfill.
That's only at Granous.
Where else?
No, it's only at Granous.
Everywhere they pick up trash?
No, there are recycled bins at all the ball fields. There's a gentleman in the back of the room that puts them there and collects a lot of...
Yeah, he was telling me, and he told me when, my only point is this, okay, we're talking about two guys...
There are recycle bins at the...
We're talking about two guys running around...
There are recycle bins in these areas, maybe not at Granous.
There might not be at Granous.
I'm just talking about the amount of time these guys are going to be spending.
But it's the same...
Okay, we hired maintenance workers because we have these falling off the building here, because, you know, every building in this town needs work, and now they're going to be running around doing trash. My thought was, maybe if we privatize it, hey, I know I'm going to be outburdened anyway, but I'd say there's a waste of the manpower, we've got so much work that needs to be done on our public buildings, and these guys are going to be driving around picking up trash and recyclers, and a vehicle that's not actually suited to do it.
Okay, how about something like this, we're going to obviously be changing strategies when the dump closes, we're going to have to put out a new contract for a contract that now collects and haul the waste to Johnson. So that's only a year or two out, when that comes out, we can just add these parks and anything else to that collection contract. In the meantime, get by with our guys till we get that contract in effect, and we kind of do both, both things, both ways, just a suggestion.
I want to ask the town administrator a question. Do you feel that this is a problem for your maintenance group?
No, because it's not about doing trash runs, it's about taking care of the parks. So if the guys go on a Monday and do the trash run, and then there's a huge tournament or out-of-town game, get a lot of fans or whatever, and we have a mess, they go back and they pick the trash up...
They do that.
Again.
And that's just out of the blue, all of a sudden it turns, never scheduled, right? It's not like we couldn't know that it was coming up, it's just a big tournament.
No, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about...
There's no reason for this attitude.
Well, my point is, they're on our staff, and they are at our discretion to pick up the trash as needed, so that the quality of life of people in the town is that there's not, there should never be trash overflowing in our parks.
I agree.
So you don't, these guys are probably only spending a couple of hours on these runs.
No, they're not. They're doing an whole day, it's what you told us last time, they're doing an whole day.
Who told us that?
That's what we told us last time.
Did you tell...
And I, you know what, I got to tell you, I've seen it, because, you know, I'm...
Steve, I remember you telling...
No, I don't remember all day, I don't know how long they take to tell you the truth, but usually more...
I'm not going to take you all day, the town isn't as big as the state of Rhode Island, we have four parks. I, so, I don't know, but please let me manage the staff day-to-day, I don't worry about how we spend our time, and as soon as we can come along with a budget to actually fix the things, instead of standing around waiting for the money to come, we'll have the resources they need to do it.
I have two final comments. The first is, this money is targeted just for this purpose, and is only useful for this purpose, and to date, we have spent very little of that money, and we have accumulated a lot of it, and we've gotten the wink and nod from Resource Recovery to spend some of this money. So that's what we're trying to do, and improving the infrastructure of the town is a good way to do it. The second one, when we started, when Bill and I started talking about this a year and a half ago, whatever it was, part of the exercise was talking to people who said, oh, the parks and beaches are fine, I walk Fogland all the time, there's no, I walk there on Monday morning, there's no trash there. And it's because private citizens during the weekends go and clean up the beach, and private citizens through the, through the recycling committee have routes that they go and pick up trash, and we have a private citizen who sits at our meetings every other week who does same. And I thought it was about high time we stopped requiring the services of the town to be done by individual citizens that decided that they were sick of people throwing trash on the ground, and they would help out and pick it up. We should, we're, we're a municipality that's been around for how many hundreds of years, and we can't get past the point of where we can't just figure out a way to pick up garbage on the playground? For sake, God, I'm waiting.
I would entertain a motion at this point.
I would happily move that we authorize the purchase of town park recycling and trash receptacles, subject to the terms and agreements of Highland here, that has provided, is it Highland? Yeah, Highland Products Group, not to exceed $20,000. And Steve, if, when you talk to these people, they have just a statement that says they are the sole supplier of these units?
Yeah, I get that.
That'd be helpful for our attorneys.
Yes.
Our second.
I have a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, opposed?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Chief Blakey requests permission to advertise to establish a list of candidates for police
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. The next academy classes are in December, it'll take, it'll take at least four or five months to get the list ready, if we do have any vacancies, I'm anticipating one. One set of officers doesn't tend the academy, and it won't be clear for the road until next October at the earliest. So, we should have an active list on hand at all times.
Any discussion from the council?
Do we have any current expectation of vacancies in the next fiscal year? More than two?
I think that's going to be based on some labor negotiations. But definitely one, I've been advised today.
I have a motion.
Move that we authorize or grant permission to advertise to establish a list of candidates for police officer position, subject to the attachment of the budget.
Second. Motion being second, all those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Janice Bynes, Senior Center Director, requests permission to advertise for part-time clerical
My afternoon part-time clerk has retired for health reasons, and this is a grant-funded position, so I would like permission to advertise to replace her.
I have one question, why is it 16 to 20 hours?
It depends on the grant funding that we receive.
I don't know the exact amount at this point.
Correct.
I'll tell you, my concern is, I hate to see the town putting out a position at minimum wage. I just have something against that. I know it's 16 to 20 hours, but I think we can adjust the hours. These people are not making any benefits at all, they're not getting medical or something, they're not getting a pension. You're talking about a minimum wage position of nine dollars an hour. They're involved in this.
This position has been filled, it's been filled by an elderly person who has already retired and is on social security.
But you don't know who's going to respond to the advertisement. I'd hate to have somebody responding to an ad, taking the job with the town out of necessity and being paid nine dollars an hour, be perfectly blunt about it.
So, the grant provides?
I mean, we don't know the amount of the grant.
As far as the amount, it's put a cap on it, whether or not the person works 16 hours at nine dollars an hour, or works 10 at 14 dollars an hour.
I know 14 is a little bit, I'd like to get it at least at 10 dollars or 11 dollars, get it into double digits.
I guess what I'm saying is the net income is the same to the individual.
It just depends on the details.
And if it's likely going to be a retired person, it's not like they're stringing together four part-time jobs. Just a thought.
One of the reasons I do support development in Tiburon, the Capri Nato and the casino, is just the idea that people naturally be making a decent salary and be able to take care of themselves without a minimum wage of nine dollars an hour, unless you're getting nothing. My suggestion would be that we make a proposal for at least 10, I would say at least 11 dollars an hour, and adjust your hours accordingly. And if you have to come back to the town for any reason, I'd vote to support having the township in, in some amount in addition to the accrued. I just have a problem with minimum wage being put out by a town, a municipality.
Any other discussion? So, are you making a motion, Mr. ...?
I would make a motion, I would, I would really, let me adopt the proposal with one modification, and that is that we increase the position from nine dollars to 11 dollars an hour.
Do I have a second on that?
What we're granting is simply permission to advertise for a part-time clerk, clerical aid at this point. But as I say, I would modify that, to make sure that we have to put, give an indication of what the position would be paying, it'll be paying 11 dollars an hour rather than nine dollars an hour.
And where will we get that funding from?
Get it from the town, get it from the taxpayers.
Not the contingents, that's already...
Is this, is this a number that we, that you've developed?
No, no.
That's Janice's...
Janice, is this, is this part of the grant funding, or is this just a number that you've decided is appropriate?
It's the amount of money I get divided by nine dollars an hour that will support the number of hours, so...
But that supports the 20 hours per week?
Correct.
So, if we made the position 16, they would be making...
Same thing.
Or they'd be making what they say they're making.
And they would be there three, an hour a day less, roughly.
Yeah, and the problem with that is, is I have to have someone who is willing to be flexible with their hours so that I can use vacation, or if I have a conference or a meeting or something to go to, I don't have the five-day coverage. So, it's some person who gets hired has to be flexible with their time.
I just have a problem with the notion that gee, if we can get away with it, let's get away with it. Why don't we make it 8,075 cents? Why don't we make it 8,050 cents? I just have a concern about anything that has attached to it, minimum wage. This is a municipality, we can pass it on to the taxpayers, and I mean that.
But we really...
I don't, I don't think taxpayers as a group should be paying minimum wage, I don't believe anybody should be paying minimum wage.
But at this point, with the budget so uncertain, we may be $265,000 short next Monday, so I really don't want to add any expenses at this point until we see where we are, because...
And that, that's my suggestion, that Mrs. Gomes can come back, if you need more money, if we need an adjustment.
I don't have a second to this.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, why don't we repeat your motion, let's see what Nancy has.
I have to authorize permission to advertise and adopt the proposal with an increase from nine dollars to 11 dollars.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I move that we authorize the grant permission to advertise for a part-time clerical aid at the senior center, and Janice decides what the hours are, what the fee is, what the everything is, at a run or department.
Second. Any further discussion? Motion being second, all those in favor? Opposed?
Get to eat all them baked goods, this monkey.
Thank you, thank you, Janice.
Thanks, Janice.
Put some good cooking going on up there.
Chief Robert Roy requests permission to advertise for firefighter's hiring list.
As with Chief Blakey, we need to make sure we have our list ready to hire. I do know that I have a long retirement coming up. We have looked at the laterals, and I'm still waiting back to hear from the personnel brought on theirs, but I still need to create a list just so I have some depth if we have to hire.
One time it may not be replaced because we're going down format.
This may be in addition to that.
It's going to work, okay. No, I still think you should have that, I just wanted...
We just need to list, make sure that we have bodies available.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we request permission to advertise for firefighter's hiring list.
Second. Motion being second, all those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Some rules may have to be subject to the funds prior to June 30th, if I'm going to be advertising.
They always...
Advertising funds are down, so...
You don't have the money, then you obviously can't advertise.
We didn't have a policy...
These old weeks don't change things.
Didn't we have a policy a while back that said that when you, when we advertised that we would have a cost estimate associated with it, so we could keep track of what we were spending on advertising? I do. It is, it is a verbal policy, seeing how as our written policies have as much weight as our verbal policies. That would be nice from going forward, just so we can think about budgeting in those line items too, just so we don't have a rough estimate. Sorry.
It's okay. Town Administrator Miranda regarding onsite wastewater treatment services.
There's a couple of discrete agenda items before you with respect to onsite wastewater treatment system compliance. The first one is my request for authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Tiburon Wastewater District to provide the services that were formerly provided by the staff, pardon me, of the town's wastewater commission. We had full-time staff who did this, coordinated, oversaw the town's compliance efforts. Remember, these compliance efforts are required as part of state law. We've been through a rather tipsy-turvy, if you want to call it that, transition period. Pardon me, allergies don't bother me until I have to speak. The wastewater district was formed, they've taken on a huge number of tasks, they've also come up to speed by trying to start an organization more or less from scratch, go through all their papers, determine the extent of their legal authorities, and then have continued to provide the town with the services that the wastewater commission is to provide. So, first and foremost, I want to make sure we understand that, and they are a separate entity from the town, so we now need a legal agreement that locks in this arrangement. Assets have been transferred, we have dealt with how bills are collected and cleared through the town, those grants. We've also worked out a relationship around the sewer interceptor, but there are a few pieces of unfinished business, and our transition in town solicitor kind of delayed this a little bit, the, thank you. Donal, you need to take into account two things. We still want the wastewater district to provide these services to us, we have had absolutely no complaints whatsoever about the quality of services. Now, in saying that, if somebody does have a complaint, make sure that Minister's Office hears about it, so we know what we're dealing with, but there's been a lot of water under the bridge, so to speak, or through the pipe, if you want to be clear, the metaphor. The services provided have been satisfactory. Secondly, I don't want to get into all the details, but we are locked into an energy purchase contract with Direct Energy. It is directly tied to the meter numbers and the account numbers maintained by National Grid. As soon as you change that account number, you go into Never Never Land for the folks at Direct Energy, because it wasn't part of the original contract, and so it puts them into a very difficult operational bind. And I listened to them try to explain it to me, and I just threw up my hands and said, you know what, it doesn't make any difference to me if we leave all of the pumping stations, and the pumping stations are significant users of energy, on a meter, on a town account, and the town will simply pass through the bill. So, we present them with the bill, and we get reimbursed for what gets paid, so it's no expense to the town. And the next time the Direct Energy contract comes up, at that point wastewater will be on their own, but they will be another entity eligible to participate in the group purchase, and they will do so on their own. But for the time being, for the next three years, this is what we need to do. So, that's what I'm asking for. Obviously, we do all of this with the benefit of town solicitor legal counsel and final approval by the council. I just want to make sure everybody knows that this is a term demand in the administrator's office, and that there will be a work product coming to you very quickly, because as you can see from the backup materials, the wastewater side, through their attorney, has done a lot of work in giving you the, what is basically a term sheet for this, Emily.
Let's make a stupid anecdotal comment. The address on the Tiburon Wastewater District, letterhead says 86 Main Street in Tiburon?
Didn't we have one, did you?
Nope.
You don't.
Chalk that up to the designer of the letterhead.
It's definitely the east side of there.
I need a motion to authorization to enter interim memorandum of understanding with the Tiburon Water District for OWTS services. Is that correct?
Right, so if, if there was nothing that you saw in the backup materials that you found offensive or that you wouldn't support, please flag that for me now, but if this is okay, then we'll work out the legal language to get something binding to you very soon.
Do I have a motion? Second. Any discussion?
I just, I just want to be clear, we're entering an agreement that requires the town to pay $20,000 a year? This is what, that wastewater two million that we voted in, or stormwater two, or where's that money?
No, it's not stormwater two.
What part of the budget is that?
We're not at that.
Well, it's, it's not grant-funded.
No, where's the money coming from, what line item in the budget?
DPW line for OWTS compliance.
Okay, all right, I remember, I remember thirty, I just don't remember which, what line item that was.
That's one of these motions. Yeah, I guess it is.
Yeah, it is. It's part of it.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Did you get the motion, Nancy? It's just a, it's just a... Motion being second, all those in favor? Town Administrator requests approval of easement to the city of Far River.
Actually, I needed two motions in that last one. I needed a motion to authorize M U, and then, because I just want to be very specific and precise about what we do, instead of being the $20,000 for the wastewater commission, which was a town municipal body, we're now paying that $20,000 to an outside entity that's independent. So, I'd like a second motion, if possible, to authorize that payment, in this, this fiscal year, right, that we're in right now.
Move that we grant the town administrative authority to expand the current funds in the budget for onsite wastewater treatment system of $20,000 to the newly formed Tiburon Wastewater District.
Second. Motion being second, any discussion? All those in favor? Town Administrator requests approval of easement to the city of Far River regarding sewer project on Hancock Street approaching South Plutupa Park.
Madam President, I'm going to ask the council respectfully to continue this to the next town council meeting, but I would like to just introduce the topic. City of Far River is going to be running a line down Hancock Street, which will cross into Tiburon, it's going to take a bend to go down Lake, I forget what they call it, Lake Avenue, Lake Road, Lake Street, whatever, we all know it runs along the coast of South Plutupa. Along the way, they're going to cross over the very end of Willow Street, which is part of Tiburon as well. They need these easements to get on the property and actually do the digging, and then they're going to need a permanent easement for maintenance purposes. So, it's going to be two separate documents, and that's, we're exchanging documents right now between Mr. DeSisto's office and the city of Far River, we should be able to have this ready for you, if not in two weeks, certainly within four.
Move that we continue this item to the next scheduled meeting.
Second. Motion being second, all those in favor? Town Administrator requests ratification of asking contract regarding hours of work for custodian.
Madam President, throughout the budget process, I've represented that we will be cutting the seasonal worker position for savings of about $14,000 to the town. There were a number of reasons why I felt that position needed to be taken away. One of them is strict compliance with Obamacare and the requirements to offer insurance once you've paid an employee a certain amount of money over a certain amount of committed hours per week. And during the summer, we were well over that threshold, and so we would have taken a seasonal part-time employee and run the risk of having to absorb a claim for benefits, which our benefits are now very expensive, and it was unacceptable to take that risk. Secondly, a tremendous compliment to both Phil Ferrera and Manny Frantiz is that the view is they're doing an exceptionally good job in their work around town buildings. And I have to... And I have to say, I mean, they hustle constantly, they are an excellent team, they tackle a lot of projects that have been neglected for a long time, they're starting to make progress even here in town halls with what little money we do have. It's a miracle what a bucket of paint can do for workspace, to lift the spirits, the people are there all day, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Some time ago, when Mr. Barrett was an employee of the town, his hours were reduced from 40 to 32 and a half, and I believe it was to preclude some form of layoff or some other economic adjustment as the town went through a difficult time. Some people took reduced hours. So we're in a position now to get rid of the seasonal employee and give the employee who is already full-time, who's already getting benefits at 32 and a half hours a week, bring him back up to 40, and then these two gentlemen can work together as a team all 40 hours a week. Union agreed, your fiscal impact statement is in the memo.
Any questions?
So this will give me enough time to pick up all the recycle bins, right? Yes.
Any other questions? Any take on motion?
Does this have to be posted for a period of time?
If the impact statement had to be made available, please, if it is put on the website and various submissions are.
Thank you.
I move that we ratify the contract modification of the ASME contract relating to the full-time or now proposed full-time custodian position, subject to the attached memorandum and agreement.
Second.
Motion being second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Bids and requests for proposals, recreation, request for permission to re-advertise RFP for food and beverage vendors. It's seasonal. You just woke her up.
Hi. Now, we have one application, but it was, it's an individual that's never done this before, and it's still incomplete, we haven't had a meeting yet to review it, but we'd like to request to advertise again, and this time we're going to be more proactive, surprised that we didn't get more applications, so we'll definitely be more proactive to try to get some vendors in there for the summer.
Any questions from the council?
Does it mean I have the budget to advertise?
I believe Sherri said she would take it out of her account if we had to. I mean, I'm going to try to find money.
All right. We're moving. Get creative. Nancy, I was looking at your budget, and there was $10,000 left.
I've got a lot of advertising out there, all these public hearings and everything at home coming out of there.
Okay.
It's always down with everybody.
We'll be running public hearing very least.
I'm sure.
Whenever I can get it.
I'm sure.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we authorize the RFP for food and beverage vendors, and the request to re-advertise.
Second.
Motion being second, all those in favor? Opposed? Chief Brinkley requests permission to re-advertise bids for animal shelter.
Madam President, as you know, the council did approve the application, the animal shelter, very much, no bids were received, and yesterday, there was a bid received after the expiration date, or past the deadline date, and that was the only bid received. Unfortunately, we have to re-advertise, this contract does expire June 30th.
Okay. Any further questions?
So I have one question, chief, from the same person that we're with right now. The bid we did receive, the bid we didn't receive? I believe so, I did not check on the bid, but I believe it was. That business had been sold, and the individual didn't know, he had to send something in. He was contacted, but didn't have the time to prepare. It just seems like a waste of money. I agree.
They need to develop, so.
I move that we authorize permission to re-advertise bids for the animal shelter services.
Second.
Motion being second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Open public forum for announcements, comments, and questions. Sally Black.
Thank you. Sally Black, who resigned to the town council, I'd just like to thank tonight the town council for all the hard work they did on the budget, all the hearings on Saturdays and everything else. I've been going to the budget hearings since 2003 in council meetings, and earlier I was astounded because they appeared and they said, "I'd like to make a motion to pass the budget on to the budget committee," and a member of the town council, which was Brett Pelletier, said, "What are you talking about? We haven't even done a budget yet, we haven't talked about it." And then they maybe had one or two meetings, and that was the end of it, it got passed right along, and since then you've been going through item to item, and even listening tonight, again, we're talking about saving money and trying to do all different things to save the town money, you've been doing an excellent job, so I'd just like to thank you very much. It was an honor to work with you this year.
Thank you, Sally. Bob Pelletier, easels. I couldn't read that at first, I.
Okay. Bob Pelletier, the Arts Council, with our money that is reworked to the, back into the general thing, rewarded to easels for the purposes of display, but also for the fact that if you have somebody making a presentation, they wouldn't no longer have to hold it and hear the presentation. So it, I checked with Mr. Earl Cheg, and I checked with Nancy, and it was okay with them, so I went out to purchase two easels, and I actually ordered them online, and then served bigger bargain at Hobby Lobby, and I'm almost ashamed to say, these two easels only cost us $44, which I'm sure they made a mistake, I questioned, no, I questioned them about it. And do you know what it is like to check out on the Saturday before Mother's Day at Hobby Lobby with the only cashier just to open, and a dozen women with their children and projects behind you, and I'm trying to argue, "We scan it, it's got to be more, it has to be more." Oh no, this is what it is, isn't it? So, okay, this is what it is. And.
I assembled them too.
Oh, thank you.
I assembled one of them, the other one was. And here are the screwdrivers in case our buildings fall apart.
We should, we should send you out shopping for more things.
Pardon?
We should send you out shopping for more.
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Barbara. Town Administrator, items and announcements?
I think you already took care of what is on here, but I have one quick announcement. Every once in a while, you stumble across a quote-unquote fun item. If you listen to WPRO radio, you've probably heard advertisement for a program called Home Town Advantage, which is a nice, I would say, I think it's fair to say, a Hungarian restaurant in Cranston, Chapelview, Chapel Grove, offering 25% off your meal if you can prove that you're a resident of a certain community during the week that your community is featured. So I assume that the menu will reflect the produce of the community, and if you show up with proof of residence, you get 25% off your bill. Tiburon's week is October 19th through 25th. Proof of residence and the form of a driver's license, good for up to four guests, offer available on January 1st. Celebrate Tiburon, win or lose. Thank you.
In Cranston, yes. Okay, council announcements, comments, and questions.
Just want to remind everybody that everybody is voting at the high school.
What of the town referendum on May 6th?
That's right, so don't.
Don't go to the VFW.
Buy the VFW, have a beer, and then go.
Don't go vote.
Go vote.
Mr. Perry?
President, I have a few, actually. I'll take a little bit of your time. First, I'd like to pass out a letter I received late this afternoon. I did some homework on fire marshals, and I know this has been a subject brought up many a times, and it's one of those things you like to put to bed once and for all. So I had a conversation with the state fire marshal this morning, John E. Chatter, actually he was kind enough to come out of a meeting to speak with me on the phone, and he said he would send me this request or send it to Chief Lloyd, and that's why you see Chiefs Lloyd, his name up here on the top. But I'd just like to read it to you and try to get this cleared for once and for all. It says, "Dear Chief Lloyd, congratulations on the appointment of a full-time fire marshal for the town of Tiburon in place of unpart-time fire marshals. The state fire marshal's office will be conducting inspections and plan review of any state license or owned buildings within their town, where fire marshal in the capacity of an assistant deputy state fire marshal will be conducting inspections and plan review for all other occupancies. The board division of labor is typical for most municipalities throughout the state. The state's fire marshal's office is responsible for the uniform and consistent enforcement of the fire code throughout the state. To achieve this enforcement, the state fire marshals appoint unpaid assistant deputy state marshals, local fire marshals, to uniform enforcement of the state fire code within their local communities. The state fire marshal's office conducts inspections in addition to the state-owned or licensed occupancies in the following communities that have no local assistant state fire marshals. So these four are the only ones that do not have a state fire marshal. All the other ones do. Foster, Charleston.
This guy, this guy.
North Shore, which is actually Long Island. So every other one of our, I'm sorry, every other one of them, every other one of them has a fire marshal, has a fire marshal. So I hope we can put this to bed finally about fire marshals.
I think I need you to say that out loud, what did you just say?
I said, "If the number two budget passes, perhaps we can be one of these towns that leases the state and doesn't have to pay local to enforce state code."
And that would be at the discretion of the Tiburon Town Council and not the people that made up that budget.
Number two, I have the floor, Jim, you have the turn.
I was actually to say that out loud.
This is from 2012, I ran across it. It's Tiburon Town Council, policy long-term financial plan, general reserves. This was a draft, do you read it?
Got cramp.
Unrestricted general fund, request to remove final adoption of policy to be included in the LTFP. Council Colter requested a formal vote on the adoption of unrestricted general fund policy. No change, remove the monthly import from the ministry. That policy, the concept was good. Question, this was for the municipal side. The budget committee makes recommendations, it was the total operating budget. Council Colter referred to the second to the last sentence. The town council shall endeavor to request annual budgets where facilitates reaching its goals. The percentage includes the schools, the percentage is of combined, is of the combined. Council Nelson added, "The town council could spend over and above beyond the target." Council Colter added, "As an aspiration goal," this is quite interesting, "how much needed to be put reserved to lower the bond cost?" How? Imagine that. Solicitor tightset review, chair is not suspected, sets a target, no equity noted in the bond terms, the bill was admirable, and in a timed schedule places, it burdened our future councils. Council Nelson made a motion, second by Council Shabbat, to adopt the long-term financial plan, general reserve draft policy for unrestricted general fund. Motion passed unanimously. It's funny now, that in 2015, when they're not sitting at these tables or at these seats, they're at complete opposite ends of what they said back in 2012.
And this is the future councils that are running into the problem.
Then last. Last, but not least. I made a comment last week about department heads drawing down on the general funds, and I truly don't believe in doing that. I believe in putting money that's left at the end of the fiscal year back into the general, the general fund balance. So the only reason I did say that is so that what's been happening, and it's two years, we're taking $600,000 out of the general fund, $360,000 out of the general fund, again, you know, I think we know where that money should be spent better than Mr. Katzen, Mr. Colter, and Mr. Shannon, Karen, Sharon, Mr. Souza, and Mrs. Dell, and Mrs. Cook, and Miss Driggs, because they're the co-ops of this budget two proposal. I hope everyone watched the presentation last week. I happen to be sitting right behind the people who put this budget together, budget number two, and that's exactly what it is, number two. First, we have Mr. Colter, who steps up to the microphone, and of course, in a matter of two sentences, has to tell us that he's a lawyer. But you know what, Rob, we don't know you're a lawyer. You don't need to be told that every time you step up to a microphone. And then he tells us that he was on the budget committee, and you know, Rob, we also know you were on the budget committee, and we also know you were a counselor, and you actually had this lawyer's argument in the beginning, which you did. So we want to thank you for that one. You know, I was on that budget committee when Mr. Karen was in charge with Mrs. Rubegal and Mr. Montell, and I believe actually Mr. Souza was on that budget committee also with us. I was in the majority at the time, and that was okay. But his goal was, and even at that time, was to increase the general funds by 5% each year, which is a great idea, and I don't have a problem with that. But again, a lot of it is not sitting at this table, he's totally against, and he wants to take out money from the general fund, which is not what we should be doing. Then we have Mr. Karen, very interesting to watch when you're on TV, you know, I'd sat behind him and saw him go up to the podium, and he asked specific questions that were kind of setup questions for Mr. Katz. "Mr. Katz, do you increase the senior center?" Yes, he did. Well, Mr. Katz, you might have increased it $32,000 for English, but you didn't do your homework, because we gave a lot more money at that senior center than the $32,000. I'm not going to tell you where the problem is. Go find it yourself. There was nothing but a political incentive to get the votes from the senior center, and that's pathetic. Then came the, then the fun part really came, when the questions from the department heads were asked of Mr. Katz, and he kept coming up with this future needs meeting that he put $40,000 in their fund. And you know, when we figured it all out by the end of the night, there was over $200,000 that was going to come out of the future needs funds. I don't know what kind of math he does, but it's not the kind of math that we do here. But really the hilarious, again, when the department heads got up at the podium and started asking the real tough questions of Mr. Katz. It was fun to watch all these people who were sitting at the front rows, and I was sitting behind them, all start to get up and leave, because they didn't really want to hear the truth. You know, it was first, there was Mr. Colter, he got up, moved to the back of the room. Right after him, about 10 minutes later, you see Mr. Karen, Shannon, whatever his name is, Karen, he gets up, he moves to the back of the room. And then my fellow counselor here, Mr. Souza, he does the same thing. He gets up, oh, you left. Mr. Souza left.
I get up at 4:00 in the morning.
Okay, that's fine. He gets up, and he goes into the back of the room. And then even Mrs. Driggs, who was feeding him all the information right from the start, because she was on this budget committee, she got up, and she went to the back of the room. None of them wanted to be there when the questions were being asked, and the tough questions were being asked to Mr. Katz, that he had no answers for. All he kept saying was, "Go to the general fund, our future needs," I'm sorry, "go to future needs, go to future needs." We can only go to future needs so many times. People, this is not about our past, this is about our future. We have new leadership in this town, and we're trying to do what's best for the future. Last year, it was $600,000 that they took, and one time withdrawal, and you can remember last year, they said, "Well, we're only going to do this one time, this is a one-time withdrawal." Well, guess what? They're back again, and now they're taking $360,000. And they really, and with the really that this year, they're getting really, can't say what I want to, and they're not only took the 360, now they're starting messing along with the line items. You know, they know what's best for this town, and we don't. Well, it's like taking money out of your child's education to buy them a Happy Meal. The status right in for. It's satisfied them for today, but you're denying them the future of their education. Let's not deny this town a future it deserves. Please vote for Budget One. Thank you.
Any other announcement?
I'll just say one thing, please.
Of course you can.
To stand there and insult people right on here to defend themselves, I think is despicable, first off. And when people take the time to get involved in their government, which is, we all have the right to do, it is, we're right to put the budget under our charter, okay? Majority of people voted for the charter. The provision of the petition is budget is in there, and the people have the right, if they feel like they're overtaxed, to come forward and put in their own budget. And that's the way the process works. If you don't like it, don't vote for it. But don't sit there and insult people who took time out of their busy schedules to bring forward a budget. And I personally found that ninety percent of that budget was excellent. There were a few things I think they overlooked. However, there is enough money in the contingency account and other accounts to cover the bills for the year. And I think if we vote for Petition Two, that the town will be just fine, just as it was this year. We made it through without any catastrophes. Everybody said the sky was going to fall if we take money out of the general fund. Now, we did, we made it through the year, the bills are paid. And guess what? I'm going to vote for Budget Two, and I still think we're going to make it through the year just fine. And I won't be sitting here insulting people.
I would like to say that last year is totally different than this year, because last year, they took money out of the general fund, which I don't agree with. This year, they are cutting us by $265,000. They cut the money we need to send tax bills out. So, if we follow Mr. Katz's budget...
A thousand dollars.
Shh. Joe, I have the floor now. If we follow...
Well, you sound like you took a million dollars.
No, but that's what we need to send taxes out. He didn't do his homework, he just cut it. Because if we followed that, we, we will tell this town. On Monday, if that budget wins, sorry, you have to come pick out your tax bill here. Why not? If we follow it, lie, lie, lie...
Because there's enough money in the other accounts.
Okay, Joe, this isn't about you and I. What this is about, what this is about...
Just been moving down the trip.
Joe! What this is about, you said that people have the right to present another budget.
That's right.
People have the responsibility to ask questions, make sure they know what they are cutting, and make sure what they are doing to this town. And it's not just about next year. No one said the sky was going to fall this year. They said that eventually, this will come to fruition, and we will not have enough money in the general fund. And sooner or later, and I'll use the metaphor that was used the other day, if you keep using your credit card, it will max, and then you have no further money to go to. And that is what we predicted. It's not last year, it's not, it may not be next year. It will be, there will be a significant difference next year. Because what happened was, they took, they cut. They did not take from the general fund and keep our budget. They cut our budget. And I've had a lot of experience with budgets, and I feel that this is going to be a problem. I don't think you're going to take $260,000 and spend $40,000 and be able to fix what just happened. But, the sky didn't fall this year, no one predicted it would. They predict that you have to look to the future, just like you do with your own household. And that's all I have to say. I'm not insulting people. I'm just saying, it is the person's responsibility to do their homework and know what they're talking about before they put the numbers there. Does anyone else have any other...
Yes, ma'am, as far as insulting people, they have the opportunity to be here tonight if they wanted to. They have the opportunity to come to any council meeting that they want to, but they don't. They don't. They only come around one time a year to do their thing, and then they go back and hide under their rocks.
That ain't true.
I just have a couple of comments. The first one is just, you know, it's no surprise or secret that I am kind of a lack for nuance. So, when we talk about things, we can't paint everyone with the same brush. We can't paint every issue with a broad brush. And we can't say things that just aren't true. And no one said, "The sky is going to fall." We were very specific about our issues, and we were very specific about what concerns we saw from all the way from the school, the town, the administration, the treasurer, et cetera, all the people who I have, I have a great deal of trust in, their professional credential. That being said, an analogy came to me today that I will share with you. And it is a bit clumsy, but I think it expresses how I feel about this. Saying that, look, we did, we created this issue, this system last year. We took $600,000 out of the general fund to pay operating costs, and nothing bad happened. The town didn't implode, we managed perfectly fine. It's a little bit like saying, you go out on a boat with a couple of friends, and because you have the ability and the technology to plug a hole, if there's a guy swimming around your boat with a mallet banging holes in your boat, because you can plug them, it's like he's not even there. It's, it's not the same thing. We spent a lot of time plugging holes this year. We spent a lot of energy plugging holes. We got creative, and we didn't do things we were supposed to because we were plugging holes. That's not how professional organizations operate. And maybe it's, maybe it's because the town at large is under the impression, and has been for a number of years, that this town is run by incompetent idiots. That, if that ever was true, and I don't think it was, it certainly isn't true now. And I'm running out of energy to put into these endeavors if, if they're not, if, if, if they're not, you know, appreciated or considered, or my opinion doesn't matter, that's fine, I'll stop talking. And I speak for everybody on this board that has put effort into something. I respect all of your opinions, I respect all of the work that you do, the hard work. And whether or not, you know, you're the first one or the last one to the microphone, and whether you talk the longest or not at all, it's a lot of work that we, we do. And a lot of it happens during the week and on the weekends, and when your phone rings at nine o'clock on a Sunday morning, you have to answer it. I'm sure the administrator feels similarly. He does a tremendous amount of work to make, to plug those holes. You don't want bad things to happen, so you try to prevent them as best you can. Am I talking out of turn, Mr. Town Administrator?
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my two cents.
Anyone else?
And I don't begrudge anybody that comes forward and participates in government. I really don't. What I do have a problem with is when someone calls me an idiot.
Joe?
I'm done now, I'm done.
I just have a few comments. I do have to agree with Mr. Souza, Council Souza, that it is inappropriate to lambast citizens of this town, for good or bad. I think it's just, it's missing a level of civility. And you can say that at a number of meetings. Also, I'd like to point out to Council Perry that you should preface your statements with a statement that says, "It's in your opinion," and not the opinion of this council, because there's six other members that may not agree with you. As in the case of Mr. Perry, uh, Mr. Souza, he's vocal about that. But, they're still citizens of this town, they're taxpayers, and they have a right to speak, and they have a right to put forth a petition. That's the process we have, and we voted for it, it was passed, and we should respect that. And we should respect citizens of this town, as well as they should respect the council, town administrator, school committee, and anybody else, the Budget Committee, anybody else who is on that stage or in that audience, should show a level of respect for people. We may not agree, we may have different opinions, but we're entitled to our opinions. We're entitled to express our opinions. And it does take a lot of energy to go up there to that microphone and express an opinion. So, I congratulate anybody who went up there and made their opinion known, so the rest of the town can see what they were saying, can hear what they were saying, can watch on public television that meeting, and make their own decision based upon their financial circumstances, their life choices, and what they feel is best for them, and what is best for this town. We all made that decision when we voted for what we proposed as a budget. We forwarded that budget to the Budget Committee. They also made decisions, made choices, and put forth their budget. Now, you may not like how Mr. Katz or Katz and team put together their budget, but they put time and effort into it, and according to our charter, they are entitled to do that. So, now it's up to the public, the taxpayers, the voters of this town, to make a decision. And that decision will be made on Saturday, early voting on Thursday and Friday. So, come what may, that decision will be made, and we will have to live with it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Anyone else at this time?
Okay, that's my final, my final statement is, we do, and we will live with it. That's what our job is. That's why we were elected, and that's why people...
We will, but it...
I know, but that's, that's to my point, that we suffer the consequences of the budget, whatever it is, up, down, one way or the other. If the economy falls apart, we, the seven people, eight people, ten people, whatever it is, that whoever's making the decision at that particular time. That's frustrating, to have part of the autonomy of the government be removed. And to be, you know, having to figure out someone else's vision is tremendously difficult. I don't know, it's just...
I just want to point out, we are here to represent the people of this town. And if they choose, whichever budget they choose, we are representing them, and we have to move forward with that. Now, this year, who could predict that amount of snow, the use of resources, salt and sand? There's a lot of things that hit us this year. Who could have foreseen that? No one. And it may hit us again next year, and we'll have to deal with it.
Okay, moving on. Town Solicitor, you don't have any items and announcements, do you, Tom? Town Clerk? You're going to tell us about the town referendum, which we just announced.
I covered most of it.
All right.
But I just want to make sure this is the last reminder we're going to have. I, although I have put an ad in the Scotty Times, in the Newport Daily News, and in the Florida Herald, as a reminder that the Financial Town Recreendum is going to be held Saturday, May sixteenth. All precincts vote at the Tiverton High School gym day scene at 100 North Brayton Road. The polls are open from seven in the morning to eight PM. And to remind you that you need a valid photo ID is required to vote. There will be absentee voting at the Tiverton Town Hall on Thursday, May fourteenth, and Friday, May fifteenth, from seven AM to eight PM for anyone who may not be able to vote on Saturday the sixteenth. Anybody with any questions should call the Town Clerk's office and speak with the Board of Candidas. I do want to make mention, it has been brought to my attention, that a sample ballot was placed in the Scotty Times. On the sample ballot, it, it went to the printer correctly, but it should have been proofed better from our office. But it said Tuesday, May sixteenth. No, the date is Saturday, May sixteenth. And all advertisements have been fine, but on that sample ballot, ballot is printed, everything else in the contents of the ballot was fine, just so no one has any confusion. We'll also be putting signs on any of the districts where we were using for the FTR, just in case someone goes to the wrong location. So, we're pretty much set on that. And the only other thing that I have to mention is, if the council wants to begin to schedule workshops, I put on there, at the request of Mr. O'Dell's Street Committee, that it would be in June. I can't do any more till I get past this.
Let's discuss that.
That's our question, but we're going to be needing, we're going to have to be scheduling, because the planning board, they give me folders for each of you, which is with the compionato.
But that has to be out there for twenty days.
Well, the decision is posted, and there's a twenty-day appeal period.
Appeal.
But your portion, if it's appealed on the master plan, your portion is what their recommendations on the zoning amendments are and on the complan amendments.
I was just wondering.
So, would you want me to just kind of send out a blanket email to see which dates would be available? Are you trying to stick to Mondays? I mean, you're going to be having a lot of, and these, some of these public hearings may require the use of the high school or something. So, it's not like I can, you know, do it by...
Why are we waiting until we get it behind us? I was thinking mid-June now.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking, maybe we could try for Monday nights, if most of us keep Monday nights free. I think, anyway, and maybe we could just...
But what I'll do for the next meeting is kind of list them, and then you can just go see...
And see if the high school, what their availability for Monday nights are.
Okay.
I'll be at the end of the school year, so it should become more...
It's usually just getting the gym and everything, so it's just, you just do the media.
Right.
When you have, that's all I have.
Mr. Lynn?
I move that we're going to close Executive Session Pursuit of Island General Law, Section forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-five, Ray Disposition of Leader Poppy Industrial Park, District.
Second. First, we made it second. Aye. Mr. Souza?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
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 And staying closed, Executive Session Pursuit of Island General Law, Section forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-two, Ray Collective Barring, IBPO.
Second. First, we made it second.
Aye.
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 Aye abstain.
And staying closed, Executive Session Pursuit of Island General Law, Section forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-two, litigation, Ray Town of Tiverton versus James and Melissa Paltz.
Second. First, we made it second.
Aye.
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 And staying closed, Executive Session Pursuit of Island General Law, Section forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-two, Ray litigation, Solicitors Review of Pendant Lawsuits.
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
There's no, yeah. First, we made it second.
Aye.
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 We're now in executive session. I'm taking a final break.